We call the meeting to order. And the first thing, we're gonna approve the agenda. And I've had a request to add, to approve the salary schedule. And we're just discussing doing that or holding off till Thursday's meeting, so. I need a motion if someone wants to add the-
How will it be worded? For the, if it's approved tonight, how is it worded as an amended item?
Approve the salary schedule.
The fiscal year 17, salary schedule.
There were, there was, I guess, errors in it from last month?
It was a clerical error, that's all it was. It was a saving error on the PDF document, that's all.
And anything we do tonight, I would also like it to show up for Thursday night's regular scheduled meeting. That's the question here. It's salary schedule, if there's a difference, then, you know, if we're gonna add it tonight for the regular meeting on Thursday, then I would also like to be on the Thursday agenda. If we approve it tonight, then we approve it and move on. So, that's, that's the question. So, just, how would it be worded?
I thought she was asking to approve fiscal year 17, 18 salary schedule.
Are there changes? I mean, does it need to be, because it was on last month?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. And all in favor of adding to approve the salary schedule for fiscal year 17, 18, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed. I just wanna make sure it's on there correctly.
Alright, so we will add that. Add that to the end.
And I just wanna say, if it's a clerical error, it's no problem to wait and have it amended tonight for Thursday's meeting. The idea is, we amend it tonight and go ahead and vote on it, and it won't show up on Thursday's meeting, so. That's, that's my thing, is, it's, last month it was approve the salary schedule, and this month is approve the salary schedule, so.
But this will be reflected in tonight's minutes, right?
Correct.
So, how will it be worded? Since it passed, how will it be worded on the agenda? Approved salary schedule, amended?
Amended salary schedule. Yes, it's amended. Alright, so do you have any information that you can provide us?
It was column one, I was a computer maintenance technician for years 10 through 25. I had given you all the market adjustment for that. And when I saved it to the PDF that, that was, that was sent out, it was incorrect, it was just, it was the formula that I put in there, but they should've been manual entry. And so, they were, they were a little bit higher than what, what it was. And then, on column 13, from years 14, 10 to 14, it was correct. And then, but the years previous to that, they were too high, so I had to back them back down. And that's all it was, is they were just adjusted back down, so they were decreased.
Okay, so, when you save it, and we approved it last month, so, how, how did it change? If you hit save after we gave board action and approved the salary schedule, when did it say that they was too high on one column and too low on the other?
When I clicked save as a PDF on my Excel file, it grabbed the, the wrong portion of those, those columns. That's all it did.
Okay.
It was a clerical error. It happened.
I would just think that-
It was a mistake, and I apologize.
Can you have documentation in the minutes, just to show what it was before and what it was afterward?
Absolutely.
Just so we have that reference?
It's, it's exactly what I sent out on Friday.
Okay, just, that can be an attachment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. And I need a motion to approve the amended salary schedule for the fiscal year 17, 18, with the changes made to the column one positions as mentioned by Mr. Blotzinger. Is that good? I hear a motion. Okay, motion has failed. Um, we're next going on to review the agenda items for this month. Um, we're gonna start with approving the minutes of the prom board meetings. You all have had a chance to review all of them since it was sent out in our packet last week. Are there any changes or issues that we note on the meeting minutes? If not, I need a motion to, I'm sorry, we're not voting.
Yes.
Alright, if there's nothing, we'll move on.
I just had a couple of questions on the cash flow needs projected out. Do we just, what taxes do we collect in May? I notice that's higher than normal.
Sometimes we get, you know, like that franchise tax is lagging.
Is that still part of it?
Yeah, we just, we, it's not a, it's not as consistent as, as the others.
And then, what do we collect in June? The additional revenues, like 453,000?
Those can be grant items that we're closing on, other, other items such as that. And a lot, a lot of, a lot of that is based on past data, so carrying it forward. So, it might've been something that I had done, and as long as it consistently happens, that's when I, I put that in.
And then, the accounts payable, they're probably doubled. Is that, like, bond payments, the timing for that?
Mm-hmm. Well, some of that's bond payments, and some of that's, like, closing out the year, like repaying, uh, insurance payments, like workman's comp, those sorts of things. You can repay those items for the, the next fiscal year.
Okay. And then, I just had one other question. I noticed we paid CASA again, 10,100. What is that for the audit at Central City?
That should wind up stuff up. That was for the, finalizing audit at Central City and the last part of the phase two stuff.
Okay.
So, payroll was 2.3 million. Payroll expenses come up 2.6 million. I know I've inquired about this, will you elaborate?
It is gross pay of 2.371 million. Then we take employee deductions, which is a net pay of 1.549 million. Then we add 417,745 dollars in taxes, which are federal taxes and state taxes. And there's KTRS payments of 283,000. And there are CERS, which is county retirement, so some of, of 144,000. There are various insurance payments for 86,000, there are other payments for 152,000, for a total of 2.633,975.
Okay, so, on all those, you were mentioning taxes, it just says general fund grants and daycare. So, did you wanna add taxes on that? Is that what, is that what you're saying?
I mean, that's, I can, I can add that to that.
Thank you. Previously, it was a 300-page report, and I had asked that it be added, and now there's a summary, is that right?
That, that summary's been in there for the last three months.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you. But there's no 300-page report, right?
No. That was decided against.
Okay, that's the first I've heard, thank you.
Are there any other questions or concerns on the treasurer's report? We'll move along to payment of bills and salaries.
I just have a question. I just have a question, okay?
Is there any concerns on that, questions? We're gonna move along to payment of school bills. Um, I know Mr. McCarty's asked the principals to come today. Shelley had requested last month to have our SBDM minutes and our financials for each school separated out, and so it'll be a little bit more clear to review.
And I just wanted it where it was, uh, something that was looked at. I was not asked anything about having the principals come, I thank you, and that's a pleasant surprise. Thank you, Stephanie.
Well, they agreed to he asked them to come.
You're welcome.
They thank you as well. Okay. So, in review of the school financials, did anybody see anything in particular they have questions about?
I'm thinking what I ask, if, if, if the principals come in the work session, if there's nothing on the agenda, if you don't have any questions of them, that, you know, I don't see them, they bring them back Thursday night, again, if you don't have any questions. What I did when I came in was, we used to have the principals here every board meeting, and, but they'd work so long hours and stuff, that if they didn't have an agenda item, I didn't see them, nobody coming in. So, during the work session, if you, I brought them in, of course, I don't know what Central City or Robbie might've spent down at Breaman, that's their business. So, if you have any questions, I'd like to bring them in on the work session, then cut them loose for the board meeting unless you need them for something.
Sounds fine.
I just had a question on the minutes for the high school, Ms. Bump. It was talked about, the recently vacated drama and English positions will not be filled?
Yes, ma'am.
So, are we just staffing with people we already have for those, or?
Yes, ma'am, as, as, I'm sorry for what I was saying, I apologize.
You're fine.
As the board and, and we're just mandated by personnel departments, we are overstaffed, that continues to be something that the board points out. So, we are doing every, making every effort possible to make sure that we absorb positions such as that.
I just wanna make sure, I don't know if drama was going away, or if we were still keeping the program.
Drama, yeah, just to clarify, drama certification is actually under the random of English certification, um, and not under what many people would think under art or fan or court or something like that. It is, it is under the English certification.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any more questions on the school bills or SBDM notes? And the next thing on the agenda is the student tenant report.
Uh, what I'll be going with Thursday is attendance and enrollment. I think Lee's here, if you've got any questions. We'll be doing an annual, our annual Frisky Center report. Penny's here tonight, I think Kim Meadows will actually do that Thursday night, and then our locals facilities waiver, I'll let Mellie do that. So, if you've got any questions, it's pretty straightforward, it'll be the same attendance report we normally have. It's our annual, like, our annual Frisky report. And then, I think y'all are pretty well up to speed on the waiver, the facilities waiver that Mellie's, that Joey was bugged on the last time. Any questions, we'll be glad to answer them. Try to.
Is there any way that you could discuss the audit report for Central City, culture audit? I know it is on the website, I did finally find that, but, um, I'd really like it put on the-
Can?
-front, like, the homepage?
Okay.
Where we could click on, if that's possible. And the phase two report as well, we kinda have to go through a lot to find that on the website.
Getting all this, Ted?
Sorry, Ted.
Okay.
So, just, if you don't care, just leave it out, we'll discuss, we'll discuss that. Okay, and personnel actions, Ms. Brown? There you are, go ahead. Is there any questions with personal actions at all? We didn't have very many. If not, we're gonna go down to the, um, high school beta club donation. Um, I think Michelle Armour, just to kinda give an overview, Michelle Armour had emailed Mr. McCarty, and he forwarded to me, um, high school betas going to nationals, um, they had several, uh, patients, I'm in my other role now, students to cancel, because they were not able to give them an amount of what, um, it was actually gonna cost. They were gonna do, like, a charter bus and things like that. They've had about, I think, around 12 to 15 to cancel. Um, it was gonna cost a total of over $30,000 initially, and now, they're only gonna have 22 students going. Um, with canceling the charter bus, um, because only 11 students were gonna need to ride that other charter bus, the price has gone down a lot. And they're doing a lot of fundraisers, um, they did have to cancel a 5K, only one person had registered. Um, but they're anticipating doing a couple of more fundraisers for this event. So, she had asked if there was something that the board could possibly help out with, since this is a national, um, convention, and, um, so, I told her that we could probably look at possibly doing some registration fees for those students, since they worked so hard to get there. You know, you have to have a, something for kids to work and strive for, so, um, the reward at the end is what they're looking for. And it was important to me to put this on here, because, um, you know, these kids have worked exceptionally hard. And they did do a presentation when we were at Longest a couple of months ago, and kinda gave an overview of what they did and how they, how the beta, um, had worked hard to, and what they were about, actually. So, um, this is just kind of a, an, uh, synopsis, and I think 1,300 is what it's gone down to from 18, is that right? Or are they still on the 1,800?
Still 1,800. Last I had, the registration was 1,300, but then they added in some other things, so.
Well, the reason I ask is because the registration had gone down about $500 from when I initially talked to Ms. Armour, so.
I can find out tomorrow.
And I think I had spoken with Eric over there to get with her to kinda get the members of the kids, so, um, and when I talked to her, I just said registration fee. So, if the registration fees are less, then we might just, we might can do the 13 instead of the 1,500 possibly, so, just a note.
I would suggest just that, like we talked before, just the up to-
Up to? So much per student?
You could say up to the 1,800, and then, if it's less, then obviously we're-
Okay.
So, there's, um, a school activity fund at West Campus, there's like $125 in senior beta, but East Campus has like $21,000, excuse me, $16,000. So, what's the difference?
If, if I may, I'm assuming you're directing that toward the high school?
Or any of my board members that want, that are familiar and wanna elaborate?
Uh, since it's my activity account, I would feel better if I were to, if you may, Ms. Lavelle.
Certainly.
Because we do have the beta sponsor located at East Campus, we beta sponsor, beta, senior beta is 9 through 12. We also have a co-sponsor located at our junior senior campus. Because the main sponsor is located at the freshman sophomore campus, board members, that is why that amount looks larger than that of the junior senior campus. And please also know that not all of the expenses have been taken out for the upcoming national convention, so that is why that amount looks large right now. Once the convention comes, obviously, that amount will, will go down.
Okay, so, it says the receipts for the month were 7,000, and the expenditures, this is East Campus, were 12,000. So, there's more coming out from that?
I, I can follow up with Ms. Armour, but yes, because she is the main beta sponsor there, there will be additional funds to come out from that. You usually have to make a, in my experience, you usually have to make a down payment early on for senior beta, especially at national convention, and then follow up with all final payments, I think.
It just looks like there's $16,000 in senior beta, whether it's East Campus or West. Will she have an update for the amount?
Yeah, I can provide that for you Thursday night, it would be my pleasure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And the next thing on the agenda is consider a $500 donation to the high school academic team for fees for their competition. Um, I was also approached by the, Amanda Anderson, the academic team coach at the high school, she is an English teacher there. Um, they had a couple of students to qualify for future problem-solving international competition, which is in June. Um, they're gonna be competing around the country with those in foreign countries, at the University of Wisconsin and La Crosse, Wisconsin, on June 7th through the 11th. The cost was quite high. She wanted to know if the board would possibly assist and help meeting their financial goal. Um, they are currently $442.88 short of paying the trip, and they have asked for a $500 donation. And I think this is also pretty phenomenal of our kids in the district, and a nice way to reward their academic achievement. Is there any questions?
Um, East Campus, is it, uh, is there a East and a West Campus academic team on East Campus? It shows they're $1,700?
Are you directing that toward me again, Ms. Lavelle?
Yeah, or just asking?
Uh, it is, uh, academic team, again, is 9 through 12, we collect money at each, each campus. Ms. Anderson oversees all accounts, it just helps with that. The problem that, what board members have to understand is that because not only is it that we have the East and West campuses, there are two different banking systems, so therefore, both accounts, uh, both activity accounts have to be kept separate that way.
I'm looking to see on West Campus what their balance is.
And it could've been at one time, if I may, also, Ms. Lavelle. Also, our academic team coach, she resigned mid-year, so if there's not an account showing up at the West Campus, it could be that we housed all of it at the freshman sophomore campus, um, so therefore, we did not create an account, nor transfer the money over to the junior senior campus. But again, Ms. Anderson is in close contact with Mr. Crowder, the financial secretary located at East Campus, to make sure that everything is, is kosher.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and the next item on the agenda is, um, project prom donation, consideration of $500 for project prom expenses. Ms. Bump, would you like to?
Yes, my pleasure.
You just better stay up.
I come on behalf of the parents, and yes, it is accurate fact. Um, it's just one of those items that the parents fail to recall that we have to let the board know ahead of time to get items on the agenda. Uh, the $500 donation is the donation that the board members have typically done in the past, and again, would get a good jumpstart on the following year as well, or on the next year, since they did, hoping that the board would do so, they did spend that $500. But again, understand if the board chooses not to do so. As you recall, the, uh, project prom is an alcohol-free and drug-free event that we offer our students, regardless of what grade level that they are in. And many of the parents come in, volunteer their time in order to provide not just prizes, but also games for our students to be able to play, so that they're in a safe environment.
So, these expenses, the parents pay personally, or just be reimbursing, or is it?
It's donations from across the community, it is helpful from, from that. Many parents also use their own personal money to help with some of those donations as well. It's a combination of everything.
But this will just apply really till next year, or is that your saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, West Campus, they have $14,000 in that account.
Please remember, Ms. Lavelle, that that is a month behind, so that amount will be drastically changed when you meet next month. So, um, what the charge of the project prom is here is that they have at least $2,000, anywhere from $2,000 to $2,500, so that the next set of parents, should they continue to do that each year, have an amount to start out with the next year.
Okay, so, um, can I give you an idea how they did all the raising of $10,000 to parents? Were those, did they solicit the donations from the community themselves, or was that something the school helped facilitate?
Uh, we help facilitate by helping to pay for the postage, um, at times, some of the postage did come out of the project prom account, but I do try to assist with that. We also print the address labels when needed, provide envelopes. We also provide the tax document for the businesses, so that they be able to show that for their tax identification. Um, but we try to be the liaison, it is all left up to the parents. We're really just a guy on the side for them, while they're the sage on the stage in, in collecting those donations, in front of their hard work.
It is a great program, I've got kids, it's been through, and it's, makes your parents feel better.
They had project prom when I was in school, too, still. I'm not that old.
Yeah, makes everybody feel better.
Alright, the next item on the agenda is to approve community eligibility option for food service for the 17, 18 year. Ms. Cooper?
Well, it actually has changed from community eligibility option to provision. That changed last year. I just wanted to make sure, so that it was right on the books. And for your new board members, what that is, is we get a direct certification each month from the state, and you have to be at least 40% on food stamp, Medicaid, foster to qualify for this. Our county this year is at 53%. Last year, we were 51. The only school that actually does not qualify is West Campus, and they're at 39%, but we can group them in together, and so, we can, we can do that. And what that does is we get to feed every child in Millamore County schools a free breakfast and a free lunch, at no cost to the board at all. But you do have to approve it each year.
So, just out of curiosity, why does West Campus not have as much?
Um, this is just my fault. I think that families of young, with younger children are just getting established, and they're more able to budget their money, have better jobs, and so, as your child gets older, there's not as much of a need. That's just my suggestion, I, I don't know that to be fact. There's no documentation for why.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next one is for West. Approved declaring a food service oven surplus property and authorized sale.
We have to use the word surplus, but this is actually a brand-new oven. This was bought, two directors before me. It doesn't fit anywhere in our school system, it's very small. Uh, it would be perfect for a convenience store, like an Arby's, or, um- maybe a hotel. It's very nice, uh, it's all, like, all the racks and everything with it. It was bought from North Middle. And for the left. North Middle does not have the, the baggage to carry it, and all the other schools have gas, and you can't use it there. I did not buy this, and I just wanted to add out there, I bought it.
Why on earth would we buy something that wouldn't even be compatible?
You'd have to call two directors before me. But anyway, I want to sell it, but we're calling it surplus because that's what we have to do, but it's brand-new, and like I said, I could make someone a really good deal.
Do you think it was over $5,000 when it was purchased?
But I'm talking, this was probably at least six years ago. But it's brand-new, it's nice. Worked nice in a hotel, you know, had continental breakfasts and stuff.
I think, do you think this was ever inventoried in?
That I'm not sure.
So, everyone knows that we haven't had this inventory, right?
It's being conducted right now.
It is, so, here's my thing, and I've said this numerous times, if we, if we don't have, we don't show where it comes in, then why should we surplus? Whether it's, anyone agrees or not, but, you know.
Wouldn't it have to be on your inventory list when you make a, that expenditure went out?
Honestly, when it was purchased, it was probably at the threshold of capitalization. What was done at that point, I cannot speak to that.
So, it could've been just expensed off?
Yeah.
And I wasn't here, so.
But is there any documentation of how, how it was done? I mean, do we have a trail of, I mean?
I look in the system, there's probably a check number.
But you see what I'm saying?
There should be an asset item, shouldn't it, if it's on?
There should be, I mean, that's what I'm saying, I don't-
I was in at the school to look for the tag, I did not find one. Like I said, that was-
Like, property of Millamore County tag? Like, what kinda tag are you looking for?
That's tag. Like I said, that was, that was before.
So, where is it now? Is it at North Middle?
No, it's in, it's sitting in Green Hill's Kitchen, in the west. And that was before I got there.
Lee, what do you got to say to that? Is that what you wanted to hear, Stacy?
I understand, but at some point, you do have to, you have to understand that it is not attractive for the community to see that we're purchasing things, number one, that aren't even compatible. I mean, I'm not sure who's making those decisions, but six years ago and somebody was doing that and they were in charge, really? I mean, I'm just saying.
Well, I mean, I agree, but.
Thank you.
Responsible for what was bought before I was here.
We just have to look at it at this point in time.
Yeah, so I'm just saying. But this isn't the first time. There's all these things that we got to surplus, because gee, you know, so I wonder, are we doing store wars?
I would consider that a good thing. I would say that we're cleaning up.
I know.
We're cleaning up the sins of previous. So we're doing a good job.
That's part of your inventory.
Six years, though. I'm just saying.
Yeah, six years ago.
So when we purchased it, we should have said, oh my goodness, this is not going to work. Let's swap it out, let's get something new, let's do something else.
But all them people that done that's gone.
Well, were you, were you a board member then?
No.
You were not? Okay.
Not six years ago.
I understand, but I'm just saying.
I don't know.
Well, is there a receipt where we purchased it?
That's what I'm saying, all them people that did that are gone.
See, no one has a definite. And when we have to have, would we need board action to purchase it?
Yeah.
No? No? So there's really not board action of purchasing these things, but there's board action to surplus them?
I mean, we don't have a surplus, so we can just keep it.
No, I'm, I'm just, it's the agenda item, I'm just having discussions.
Leave it in the white. Leave it there with Stacy, her stepmother.
Either sell it or keep it.
Let Lee and Stacy figure that out.
Okay, well, since nobody knows about the oven, we're going to go on. On the next item, it's consider creating a two-part-time, creating two-part-time teaching positions, three days a week, one math, one science at the Renaissance Center.
I guess that's it.
That's it.
Basically, this is a continuation. Those positions were there this year. Last year when the board voted to have those positions, they voted them for just a one year term. So my suggestion, and we do have Mr. Watkins here that can probably tell you quite a bit more than I can about it. To me, everything I've seen, every communication I've had, they were very successful, very helpful, very meaningful for the students. And I very highly and strongly suggest that those positions be filled for next year.
And I think we just did the one year, just to make sure that, you know, what the number of students would be.
Sure.
From year to year could fluctuate, so. Any questions?
We're not actually creating the two positions, we're just keeping them going.
Correct.
Well, we created them last year.
Correct.
They were last year creation.
Yes, for one year.
So how do, how do districts do it without an alternative school? Because there's some that just don't even have an alternative school.
Most school systems I know have alternative schools. I know like Davis, maybe some of the smaller ones like McLean that can't afford it or something, but I don't.
I think they ship, they send the kids over to Ohio County.
McLean's go to Davis County, Owensboro, but you've got, you've got to have an alternative school setting.
Just may not be within the county.
Yeah.
We have forty-seven kids at the alternative school and about fifty in the MOO program, so it's a lot of students.
MOO program is online?
It is, but we have a lab and they have to take all of their tests and finals. They also come in and get help from the math and science teachers in particular. Those are, those are two subjects that are just tough on all kids.
What's the age limit on the MOO program?
It's, it's nine through twelfth and then up to twenty-one.
I was thinking they could come back and complete their education.
And we have some, well, we have a lot of students that have dropped out, nineteen, twenty years old, that two or three credits behind and we get them graduated.
Right.
Okay. And the next thing on the agenda is bidding DOT physicals for the seventeen eighteen year.
It's an annual requirement.
Right. Any questions about that? And the next thing is to consider textbooks plans. Ms. Roberts?
Yes, I have five different plans that need approval. For the five, it's just a matter of they're going to be requesting a roll their funds over so they can combine them with next year's funds. Because textbooks are so expensive, it's really hard for them to make a school-wide purchase, even with two years' worth of funds, so at least they can do several grad levels at the same time that way. And then the only one that was different was Millamore North Middle School, and they actually are doing what is called an off-list purchase, and that's why the paperwork is so thick. The state's fine with that, as long as you fill out all the different forms that they require. And, excuse me, since I sent the information to you, I have been able to secure approval from the state for these purchases from Kathy Mansfield, who's over the textbooks for the state. So all of our paperwork's in order for about those particular purchases right there. If you haven't had any additional questions that you went through the documents. You can tell, for example, on the Millamore North Middle, a purchase like a single textbook, eighty-seven ninety-seven, so it's quite expensive to make a full school purchase or quite costly.
Anybody have any questions? All right, the next thing, approve renewing partnership with West Kentucky University Confucius Institute for replacement of a Chinese teacher at Central City for the seventeen eighteen school year. I know we had this in place at Central City, I think, last year, isn't that right? Central City people? Okay. And so now they're wanting to do this for another year and there's also, the next item on the agenda is basically the same. It's for a Chinese teacher, teacher at North Middle School for the seventeen eighteen year. So they're wanting to try to put, is it going to be the same teacher at both, or will it be two different ones?
She will be, she will not be certified. She's certified this year, she had a one-year Kentucky certification. Had she pursued master's classes, that would have been reissued. She did not. But she can come back as a classified teacher and do exactly what she did this year, she was in, in with a certified teacher most of the time.
So it went well?
It went very well. Our kids, they, they carry on conversations with her and, I mean, they've learned so much about the Chinese culture. She even brought her daughter, her daughter is a student at our school.
Really? Is there any questions about the Confucius partnership?
I think it's a good program. I'm enjoying it.
Really?
Keep not inviting mothers, they are intense.
Wow. Okay, and what was the, consider the tentative budget?
I sent this, this also was sent to you on Friday. I had some of the highlights that were contained within. At this point, there, we did, we've got Fund Two data that's in there, that's not in the draft budget. However, the state has not given grant information, award information yet, so basically Fund Two is a carryover from last year. We have to do that just to budget for it. At this time, we do expect a little bit higher beginning balance, which is, which is a good thing. I did not, as in my models that I presented to you all in the past, I did not reckon, I wasn't planning on recommending a tax increase for this year, so the local taxes will stay the same, so we asked for the compensating rate, which just produces the same amount of revenue as the previous year. It's got the, the three percent salary raise. There were some additional items in maintenance that we, that we're just budgeting for. It's not necessarily to say that we're going to need them, but we did spoke with Jimmy, just having a backup, two boilers and two cooling towers at each campus, at West, East and West, so that's about, that's a million-dollar expense, just to replace those.
So you're saying you put that in the budget?
I put that in the budget, just, you know, as a, as a contingency, just in case.
At which schools?
At East and West Campus, because they're ending, they're nearing the end of the life cycle for those. We did budget for two more buses and really there was nothing else of any great significance. The one thing that, we do have enough money in our maintenance budget. This building, especially in the, in the back, it leaks significantly whenever it rains, so there is a, a budget, you know, there's room in the budget for a roof should we need to, to do that this year. But other than that, there are really no other significant increase. Oh, excuse me, there, there is one other item that I did account for. KU has said there's going to be about a six percent increase. Now, some of that may have been mitigated with the KSBA consortium that we participated in, but I did budget for that six percent increase, just in case. All of our energy efforts, I do expect them to hopefully keep our consumption flat, but even if our consumption remains flat, it's still going to be a six percent increase on the bill. So, you know, it's kind of like going to the gas pump. You can control how much gas you put in your car, but you can't control the price of the gas at the pump, so.
So your maintenance, the million dollar for the East and West Campus boiler, then where is, which fund? So the general fund?
It's in general fund, it is on page, it's on page seven and it is line twenty-six-hundred plant operations and maintenance and it is contained in oh-four-hundred purchased property services.
Okay.
About three-point-five-six million.
And the buses?
Would be in transportation and the same line item.
Oh, is it, is it titled the same, purchased property services?
So it'd be on page eight, contained in, I'm sorry, it's in, it's under supplies, actually. Oh, six-hundred.
The roof for central office? Is that in maintenance also?
That's in net maintenance, that same line item.
Oh, same item?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then the KU, prediction of six percent increase?
That's in plant operations and maintenance and it is in, it's on, that too is also in purchased property services, that's contained, there's a, that, that oh-four-hundred is kind of, it is a big catch-all.
Okay, is that on page seven?
Seven.
Purchased property services?
Assuming the amount gets lumped into that.
Okay, so that's KU?
Mm-hmm.
And then you said that is the plant operation and then the buses is transportation and then is this the roof also?
Correct.
Okay, we're down to the board consent agenda. Believe of absence facilities fundraisers and field trips. Any questions regarding this information?
On the tentative budget, will it be attached to the E-meeting?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
But I also did send that out Friday night.
Yeah, email.
I did.
Yes. Is it already attached? I didn't go back since Friday.
I have not attached it because my staff works until the nth hour.
Okay.
You know, cleaning it up.
But it'll be attached, right?
It will.
Thank you.
Hi, if there is nothing on the consent agenda, we will go into entering closed section. Present to KRS six-one point eight-one-oh, section F, I need a motion to enter into closed section.
I'm like, motion?
A motion, bonus, wheels, second, two seconds, three, four, hours. You are dismissed.